Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I would like to call to order the regular meeting of the Planning Commission. Today is Thursday, February 25th, 2016. The time is 7:03 PM. Could we have roll call, please?
Commissioner Ramirez?
Here.
Commissioner Korzek?
Present.
Commissioner Veneta?
Here.
Commissioner Baker?
Here.
Commissioner Barnes?
Here.
Vice Chair Sim?
Here.
Chair Lowell?
Here.
Alternate Commissioner Nickel?
Present.
Alternate Commissioner Gonzalez?
Here.
Thank you very much. And I believe Commissioner Veneta would like to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance tonight.
Please stand.
Join me in the pledge to our flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Please be seated. Would anybody like to move to approve tonight's agenda? See if we can we vote on this? Wait for the vote. We have the voting option enabled on this? How about we just do a verbal motion? Oh, there we go.
I move to approve the agenda.
Anybody like to second?
I'll second.
Oh, seconded by Mr. Baker. Okay, anybody, please cast your vote. Perfect. Tonight's agenda has been approved seven to zero. Moving on to our consent calendar, I do not believe we have any consent calendar items tonight.
None.
Perfect. Moving on to the public comments portion, do we have any public comment speakers tonight?
We do have one.
Okay.
On and on item.
Let me clarify. The public comments portion of the meeting is the portion where of our meeting where any person wishing to address the commission on any matter, either under the public comments section of the agenda or scheduled items or public hearings, must first fill must first fill out a request to speak form available at the door. The completed forms must be submitted to the secretary prior to the agenda item being called by the chairperson. In speaking of the commission, any member of the public may be limited to three minutes per person except for the applicant for entitlement. The commission may establish an overall time limit for comments on a particular agenda item. Members of the public must direct their questions to the chairperson of the commission and not to any other member of the commission, the applicant, the staff, or the audience. With that, I would like to open the public comments portion of the meeting tonight. Please call the first speaker.
Rafael Burguerras?
There we go.
Good evening, commissioners, staff, residents of Moreno Valley, and guests. My name is Rafael Burguerras, and I'm part of the Moreno Valley Job Coalition. And I'm here to say thank you so much to all you commissioners for the whole for the good work that you have done, because I've been to a lot of meetings, and I've been hearing of all the new projects that have been approved that are in their last phases. And Moreno Valley is really grateful to U7, really, because it takes courage to figure a lot of things out, make sure that the city is getting the fair part of it, you know, that we're not getting bad companies coming in and destroying our city, because that's the fight throughout everything that we do in the city, is to make sure that our city stays protected and safe and clean. And being part of some of the other organizations that I go to and listen to all the work that you have approved, the city needs to know that it begins here. All the work begins right here in this room, where U7 approving the work. And I, for one, do not want to forget who you are, and the city should not forget who you are, because you do a lot of great work for us, and we fight for these kind of jobs and approvals. So, thank you so much for your hard work, and may you all be blessed. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much. Our next speaker is Tom Gerald.
I'm sorry, Chair. He's actually going to be speaking on the first item.
Were you wanting to speak on the non-public?
Could the commission abolish me for just a second?
Sure.
And say happy new year and welcome back. I haven't been here in a while, and I want to echo Mr. Burguerras's comments. We do appreciate the good work the commission has done. I think what you did was a really challenging, controversial project at WLC, which is nothing short of masterful, was very well done. Always be grateful for that. I think it really set the bar high, not just for the commission but for the city. So you'd be commended for that. And I know it takes a lot of commitment to do what you guys do, even though you get a stipends, it's you don't do it for the money. It's a big, 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 big undertaking, big responsibility. But I do want to give a little plug. It's a little outside of planning, but you know, if we don't have good things in our city, next week got that great concert over at the City Hall, right, at the main building, 7 o'clock on Thursday, the 3rd, and it's going to be, I'm trying to remember, the famous composer's work there that does all the Star Wars music and everything. So anyhow, but it's free, and it's a wonderful thing, and a great way to develop community pride, and have a nice evening. So, thank you.
Thank you very much. I'm assuming you still wanted to speak on the next item. Are there any more public comment speaker slips?
No.
Perfect. With that, I will close the public comments portion. Moving on to the non-public hearing items, do we have any non-public hearing items tonight?
We have none.
Perfect. Moving on to our first public hearing item, which is case PA 15-0042. The applicant is Verizon Wireless. Case planner is Ms. Claudia Menrique.
Just like to introduce Claudia Menrique as our associate planner. The application before you is a wireless communications.
Good evening. I'm Claudia Menrique, the case planner. Tonight, we have a conditional use permit, a CUP, for a new wireless facility. It is a 70-foot-tall mono broadleaf, also known as a elm tree tower. The proposed tower is located at the Oasis Community Church. It's in the parking lot. The church is located at 23750 Alessandro Boulevard. Up we have the aerial, the small yellow dot within the red box is the location of the proposed tower. Verizon has a new design, which doesn't require an equipment shelter and allows for a smaller footprint, so the lease area is 14 by 16 and will house the required equipment in the tower. The lease area will be screened by an eight-foot fence, which would be screened by some landscape shrubs, as well as the existing trash enclosure that's located on the south end of the proposed site. Here's the site plan. South is Alessandro Boulevard. The site is 350 feet back, or north off of Alessandro. The houses to the north are 240 feet, and then the setbacks from both the east and west, which are neighboring commercial uses as well, are 250 feet. There's a closer site of the actual site plan. The three large circles with the crosshair in the center are going to be proposed additional trees that will be planted. The species are not called out yet. They'll fit the environment and the climate of Moreno Valley, and will be one of the broadleaf species that's currently in the parking lot. There's about three or four different tree species currently in the parking lot. So we wanted to sort of pick one or two of the ones and have them blend in further. This is the tower itself. Again, it's 70 feet. Here are some conceptual drawings of the tree, and also the proposed additional planting of the three trees that will be added to the site. Here is looking north from Alessandro. East, looking towards the site. The looking southwest. And here we have, again, east from the parking lot, looking towards the tree. Site analysis for the project identified a significant gap in the coverage from Alessandro and Hickok Street, and this proposed tower will fill in and increase the capacity for Verizon. This is the existing coverage. The site is located within the navy blue, close to the pale blue. It's sort of hard to see. Here's with the proposed site. You'll notice it's all green now. And then this is with the additional sites nearby. The proposed site is exempt under SEQA Class III, Section 15303, for new construction or conversions of small structures, as the site and project will not have a significant impact on the environment. Public notice was sent to all the property owners within 300 feet of the project, as well as posted on site and published in the Press Enterprise newspaper. All three items were completed on February 13th. And staff recommends that the Planning Commission certifies that the project is exempt under SEQA Class III, Section 15303, and approved conditional use permit PA 15-0042, based on the findings in Resolution 1016-12. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Do we have any questions for the staff before we invite the applicant up? Questions? Commissioner Ramirez?
Has there been any concerns raised by any of the businesses or residents in the area?
No, as of tonight, I received no phone calls or inquiries about the project.
Thank you. Any other questions before we invite the applicant? Commissioner Barnes?
Does this site have a provision for additional vendors to use this pole, or is this Verizon only?
Right now, it's Verizon only, but with the 70 feet, it does allow for co-location in the future.
Any other comments, questions? Perfect. I'd like to invite the applicant up if they'd like to say something.
Good evening, commissioners. My name is James Rogers. I'm with Smart Link. We're representing Verizon Wireless on this application. Just quickly, as regards to the question the commissioner had regarding the co-location, on the elevation drawings, we do show where additional antennas could be placed, so there is spacing there structurally. It will accommodate. If, when, how many, that's up to, you know, some future wireless carrier, so, you know, we can't say just when or how that would occur. Obviously, it would come through the city for review and approval. As far as the project, I think as staff showed in the exhibits here and the staff report, Verizon experience coverage is really drops off at about, I think, I believe it's Graham, North-South Street to the west. And so this site really is necessary to cover all the businesses and then the residential neighborhoods along Alessandro, going further to the east. The, I think, the conditions of approval as they've been drafted, Verizon has reviewed it and finds them acceptable. And at this point, I think I would just be happy to answer any questions you might have or that might come up in the hearing.
Thank you very much. Does anybody have any questions for the applicant? I appreciate it. We'll call you if we have any questions. I'm assuming we have a couple of public comments?
We do.
Perfect. I'd like to open up the public comments portion of this hearing item. Where's the speaker button? I don't have the ability to call up somebody right now. Could you call them up for me?
Yeah, we have. First up is Rafael Burguerras.
I want to get a correction before I speak.
Okay.
I was hoping that why I put down 3, 1, I'm thinking that this is 1, 2, and 3 in the back. So I want to speak acapella.
Okay.
So I'm good to go back?
Yeah, you're fine.
Great, thank you.
Thank you. I know we saw somebody submitted a late paperwork. If anybody else would like to speak on this, please fill out a form, and could you call the next speaker, please?
Tom Gerald.
I don't know why I don't have the option to call up speakers myself.
Thank the Chair of Law, Vice Chair of Sims, commissioners, the staff and the public both here in the chambers and watching at home, on the Internet. I have been reticent about supporting cellphone tower approvals. For one thing, they've come quite a long ways of, you know, making them look good. I was looking at a real tree the other day. I could swear it was a, it was so perfect. I said, I don't know real trees grew that perfectly. I said, that's got to be, I'm looking, no antenna. Maybe it was one. I don't know. It was really duff. But in any event, they've done a great job. And I've seen some of the Verizon plans, and, you know, I always tell people, you can tell a good project just by the quality of the plans, and with several engineers on there, our commission, I'm sure you can respect that. They really put a lot of detail, and I infer they answer a lot of questions. But the biggest reason I support this and just about any cell tower that might come up, I give it as a public safety issue. I was surprised to hear that the coverage dropped off in the heart of, you know, think about it, that's a dense area, and that's old San Yumi. And we have so many people now that are dropping home lines anymore, and they're banking on that cellphone. I always, I had an old slide phone. It was about four years old, and I thought it was my old, you know, 0G phone, like I got bad reception. I got a brand-new, top-of-the-line Android, and it's still dropping calls. And I'm not with Verizon, I'm with Sprint, and, you know, I think they're very weak in this area. And that's one comment I'd like to give. I like the idea of being able to accommodate other users, because, you know, my service is better down the hill, but up in San Yumi Ranch, it's really, really bad. I mean, I've missed some very, very important calls, and they don't even go through, and doesn't tell me I missed them or anything. So people say, I called you, you didn't answer, nothing happened. It's weird. So in any event, but, you know, God forbid, I needed a cop, fire department, ambulance, and or somebody else did. So it's a public safety issue, and I really, you know, not only support this, but, you know, the ongoing effort. I've actually talked to the Utilities Commission several times, have asked them to go to the industry. In fact, maybe one of these gentlemen can provide some resources where the industry will map out like it and show where the weak points are, because we need to get our city better served for all the service companies. Thank you.
Thank you, Tom.
I'll give my slip from the last.
You call up the next speaker, Mr. Deo?
I think it's Randall Parcell. I apologize.
Heard for the late entry.
Not a problem.
First time speaking on the city council up here, so didn't know the process. I live-
It's the Planning Commission, so-
Or the Planning Commission. The-
We just got promoted.
Yeah, what? You're obviously doing better, so.
We should just change this to mayor right off the bat, right?
I live 300 feet right behind the tower. I'm one of the houses there. I'm not opposed to the tower. I went online, checked for the, any cancer-causing law, and basically up to one to two miles, nothing, nothing closer than 300 feet, or one mile, was registered. That's still not my concern. My concern is, is there a plan in place for my, for the people along that wall that have cell site or their own cellphones being scrambled? And for interference for the WiFi's in our homes? Is there a plan in place we can call once the tower is in to rectify a problem that we do not have at this time?
I don't know that answer. We can address that after your time's up, if you'd like.
Yeah, that's a, that's a big deal. We have no problems at this time with Wi-Fi, cellphone connections, nothing. So once the tower goes in, if we start having problems, what is our recourse?
Okay. Well, we'll ask the applicant when he-
And I have Verizon anyway, so. That's it.
Thank you very much. Do we have any questions or comments before we ask the applicant if they'd like to rebut? Would the applicant like to respond to what was just asked?
As I, okay, as I understand the question, will there be any interference on, say, the residents to the north on their existing cellphones or Wi-Fi systems? And short answer, no. There will not be any interference. The FCC is very specific on the frequencies that are divvied out between the different carriers, and frankly, the frequencies used by most cities and their public safety systems, fire, police, et cetera, so that there is not any interference. The only interference we typically might be concerned about is where we are, say, putting antennas themselves very close to each other, like we would on the tower, and then we have interference between each other. And that's why there has to be a certain amount of either vertical or horizontal separation of the antennas. But for the residents surrounding, no. There will not be any interference on their devices, frankly, unless there's something wrong with their device. The, and I'm glad he, here, that he's a Verizon customer, because a couple of things, I mean, obviously, his service will improve greatly. And a thing that I just learned last week from an expert, his battery life will extend, because it's not having to work so hard. It's, it works hard, phones work harder trying to get a signal from a base station or tower a mile away. Being this close, his battery, you know, phone will have no trouble picking up, and he'll find, he should find his battery lasting longer and not heating up as much. All good things.
Thank you very much.
Before you go, before you sit down, sir? I think the second part of his question was, if there is a problem, or they perceive a problem, who would they contact?
Well, I know on the facility, there will be, and I frankly, frankly, now cannot remember if it's in a condition of approval. It's a standard one of a sign going on the fence with a phone number to contact regarding the facility, so they can certainly do that. Probably the, frankly, the best way is for them to contact the city, and the city will contact Verizon, because we have to comply with all the conditions of approval.
Okay.
Thank you.
You could probably call the planning department, pretty much any department, just to ask, and they'll direct you around. And just, we'll just give out Rick's cellphone.
So my response, the gentleman was absolutely right. First, they can contact Verizon as a provider and see what Verizon can do to kind of investigate it. If they contacted the city, the city would only be in a facilitation, a position to kind of help them get numbers to reach out to Verizon or to reach out to the FCC, but the city's not going to necessarily be in a regulatory framework to actually correct that problem, but we can point them in the right direction.
Can I answer your question, sir?
Yes.
I think you mentioned that there would be a plaque on the fence that has a phone number of who to call. Sorry.
Well, that's a question we haven't been asked before, so we don't have a good answer, but we'll, we'll look into it for you.
I don't know. Ask the council.
Chair, the issue that I see here is the city has no authority or jurisdiction over this particular issue. It would be the FCC that would have exclusive regulation over interference and frequencies that are used by these towers. So if there were ever any concerns or problems with that, the appropriate agency to contact would be the FCC in this regard.
There you go. Sorry, we're not more helpful, but that's the path of least resistance, I guess. With that said, do we have any questions or comments before we ask for a motion? Commissioner Barnes?
Back to the multi-user aspect of it, is that something that the city can condition a facility to have the ability to lease to other vendors? Or is that outside the city's purview?
Our requirement is that we can allow, we can ask them to plan for a future co-location, but we can't compel them to co-locate.
Okay.
And if I may, to the other gentleman's question, if they want to contact the planning staff tomorrow, we can reach out and find out if we can get a number from the FCC to give to them, but right now, I don't have a number for them, but I'd be happy to try and do some research for that gentleman, if you'd like. My name is Rick Sands, and I'm the planning official. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions before we motion? Vote. Who would like to motion? You jump up at once.
Hey, I move that the Planning Commission approve Resolution 2016-02 and certify that the facility is exempt from SEQA and approve the conditional use permit as recommended by staff.
Perfect. Would anybody like to second? Perfect motion by Commissioner Veneta, seconded by Commissioner Korzek. Please cast your vote. We're waiting on Commissioner Baker. Perfect. All votes are cast. Motion passes seven to zero. Do we have a staff wrap-up on this item?
Yes, this is a approval that is appealable. If anybody's interested in appealing this particular action this evening, they have 15 days to do so. They can file their appeal to the City Council through the Community Development Director, and we will agendize it for consideration by the City Council within 30 days.
Thank you very much. Moving on to the next item on the agenda, which is, we actually have two things. We have the annual update, or the update of the development agreement, and the hearing on the-
We have a, an annual report and a request for an extension of time. Julia Dakota, our associate planner, is going to give the staff report and go over those two items for you.
Perfect. So the next item is case P 15-108. Like you said, the case planner is Ms. Julia Dakota.
Good evening, planning commissioners. Again, I'm Julia Dakota, and the item before you this evening is a request from the City Council that the Planning Commission review the extension of term and the annual review for the Aquabella Development Agreement. The item was put on the calendar for the January 5th City Council meeting, however, with mutual agreement with the developer Highland Fairview and city staff, it was pulled from consideration with an express from the council that the Planning Commission review and provide a recommendation to them. The extension of term has been submitted, again, by Highland Fairview to request a five-year extension on the Aquabella Agreement. The original agreement was established on January 12th of 2006 and was for a term of 10 years. The agreement provides the opportunity for up to three five-year extensions. The extensions can be one year or up to five years. It can be anywhere in between. The applicant was required to submit in writing the request, and they stated that while there are some indications of improving economic conditions that should have a positive effect on the housing, there is not yet enough strength in the market during the last several years to support the project as it was originally proposed. The developer was also required, per the agreement, to the reasonable satisfaction of the city engineer, offer for dedication a portion of the public infrastructure set forth in Exhibit B of the attachment of the agreement, which required that certain infrastructure be completed between Iris, North to Cactus. To date, all of those items have been completed, except for two. One of them is a left-turn lane at Fur and Nason, and the other is a signal at Delphinium and LaSalle. The other agreements that, or, excuse me, the other improvements were done, completed by the city of Moreno Valley, based on money's funding sources from Measure A monies, grant monies, and several development impact funds. Additionally, the two remaining improvements currently are not warranted based on the, due to lack of physical development on the site. The annual review provides that the applicant document demonstrate good faith and compliance with the terms of the agreement. We did receive, again, a letter from Highland Fairview requesting the annual review, and staff, the city did accept that. The agreement provides that certain elements of the agreement have to be in place prior to something else. For example, the construction of the, a certain number of dwelling units have to be done before the clubhouse and different facilities are in. To date, there's been no development on the site. Currently, one half of the project has been masqueraded, and the erosion control and site stabilization features are in place. However, the grading operation has ceased as of December 2007, and the developer has surrendered the mass grading permit. And again, the City Council has asked that you review the information and provide a recommendation to them as to whether you feel that the agreement, the intent of the agreement has been met, and whether you would recommend the five-year extension or anything up to that. This concludes my presentation, and staff is here to answer any questions for you.
Thank you very much.
If I may, just, I think Julia was pretty thorough in there. I just want to make it real clear on the record that the extension of the term is a provision that's already allowed for in the development agreement itself. So, there's no modification happening to the development agreement, and there's no, there's no request in this at all to modify the actual underlying specific plan. So, it's simply a, what I would call mostly a ministerial administrative action. Again, as an advisory body to the City Council, the City Council's within their rights, and the staff working with the City Council and the applicant believe that this is a prudent approach to bring it to the City Planning Commission. And if you have any thoughts, we'll take those thoughts to the City Council. But it's really more of an administrative review of the document at this point for you.
Thank you. Do we have any questions of staff before we invite the applicant up? Nope? Okay. I'd like to invite the applicant up if they'd like.
Good evening, Commissioners. Ido Benzibi, President and CEO of Highland Fairview. There's not much to add to the staff report. I think they exactly express what the conditions are. Since 2007, 2008, we all experienced the big economic recession, some called it repression. We started with mass grading. We've done a lot of work, about $9, $10 million of work on the site. And when the economy sort of came to a standstill, so did we. We're waiting for better economic times. We have a plan that's approved. Nothing has really changed. We're not currently changing anything. Neither did staff recommend that we change anything. Some of those improvements, they have been articulated, they have been done. They have been done some by the city, some by the county, some by EMWD, Edison, and so forth. And we as well contributed several million dollars toward that effort, approximately about $8 million. And at this time, we're simply asking for a continuation of the exact same plan with no modification. All of us are all waiting for better economic times, so we can continue with development. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you very much. Do we have any questions for the applicant? No? Thank you very much. I do have a question for staff real quick. We had the annual report. Is that going to be a presentation, or just with the documents that we already provided?
It's just with the documents provided.
Double checking. And I'm assuming we have some public comment speakers on this?
We do.
Perfect. Could we invite them up one at a time?
Yes. First one is Rafael Brugeras.
Good evening again, Commissioners.
But before you start, I have to officially open the public comments portion. There we go. Yeah.
Good evening again, Commissioners. Staff, residents, guests. Once again, my name is Rafael Brugeras. I've been a resident of Moreno Valley for 22 years, and I lost my house in 2009. I had to give it up. I made a choice. It freaked out my wife. Really, it did. It broke our heart to lose our home. But I had to do what I had to do. Okay? Highland Fairview could have done the same. They could have gave up on us. They could have sold the land. He would never have pitched in his $8 million to help the city and some improvements. So, he's asking you for a favor. All of us are asking you for a favor, for an extension. I wish they would have gave me an extension for five years to help with my house, but I obeyed the law. I gave it up. I moved on. I'm glad. Really, I am glad that I had to give up the house. It would have probably gave me a stressed job. But what I'm saying is that Highland Fairview never gave up on the city. It never gave up on the land, because the land did provide city revenue. He does pay his taxes on time. He does help the community when it was down. Now, things are improving. Hopefully, next year, when the elections are over, things will get better for the country, because now we'll be focused on four straight years of what's going to happen. So, as a resident, and as part of the Moreno Job Coalition, you know, sometimes it takes a little while to get things done. But they do get done. I hope when everything gets done and it comes together, like I said in the beginning of my comments, because of you guys that bring jobs and approve good jobs in our city, we'll have more residents living in our city contributing. And hopefully, the market will open up that way he can build homes for them to live in, as we're fighting now for fair housing and other projects. Together, we'll make this city one. I like "two" because we always fight for one, because always we can improve to be one. By being two, there's a song there, "One is a lonely number." I know a lot of you guys know if you were born in the '60s, '70s, that nice little song there. But it's true. We've done very well in the last couple of years because of you, the staff, and the residents fighting for Moreno Valley. I hope that Highland Fairview will get their approval, so we can continue to have hope for our city. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Next one is Tom Gerald Senior.
Before I start my time, if I can make a quick recommendation, much like the City Council, they always call several speakers, so that the other speakers know who they are, and they can kind of get in line. Might help move the meeting a little bit better. I'll give a minute if there's other speakers that want to stage.
Thank you, Tom. Go ahead. You can go ahead, Tom, if you want.
Okay. Tom Gerald, again, speaking on behalf of myself, and definitely on behalf of the Sundance Center, where I spend a little bit of time day-to-day. And Chair Lowell, Vice Chair Sims, and Commissioners, and members of the staff and the public. I support the extension of the time, you know, for this project, and I would any major project. Has nothing to do with who the developer is, has to do with just basic common sense. It doesn't take a rocket scientist to know we've been in a long-term, protracted downturn. I listen to a lot of talk radio, and I'd always just, all the politics stuff, I listen to as much business stuff as I can. I just heard a good show about possibility of negative interest rates. You know, that's really got a major economic impact if we hit that. I don't know if we will, but it's still the fact we can even conceive that as something. That would mean you put your money in the bank, they're going to charge you to keep it, no more even 1%. So, you'll pay for the privilege, and what ramifications it could have on the economy. So, you know, we're in a different kind of economy. I just heard a good report where the actual unemployment rate is actually 22% in this country, because the government's changed the way they do it. I went to an economic conference with Professor Adibi, who was from, yeah, their Commissioner Lowell, and number one rated in the country, even over UCLA. And if you look at this recovery, if you will, it's anemic compared to others. So, you know, I think it's just a common sense thing to extend this or any major project. It's hanging in there. And I want to commend Highland Fairview. I think it's amazing they've had the staying power to last this long. I mean, a lot of you work with development industry, and man, I don't know too many people could stand, weather the storm, and still be here, paying their bills and ready to start up again when the economy comes back. So, it would be a blessing to any community, much less ours. Basic project, and every good, I was out of town when it came up for its hearing many years ago. And I apologize to the developers, because they, you know, I owed them that support. I'll give it now, and we'll belated. But nevertheless, it's an incredible project. It would be a great thing for the city. I said, I want to speak on behalf of the center. You know, we have a little shopping center on Sunny Me Boulevard. Our rates today, our rental rates, are about half what they were in 1987. That's a bad barometer for the city. So, an interjection of good quality housing in the city is a good thing as well, as well as we need jobs and other factors. But I support the extension of time. Thank you.
Next speaker, please.
I don't have any more speaker slips.
Okay. Anybody waiting to speak? All right. With that, I will close the public comments portion. Would the applicant like to respond to any of the comments they heard? All right. Any Commissioner comments or questions? I don't see anybody chomping at the bit. Before, Commissioner Venetta?
Just a couple of thoughts come to mind. Being in the real estate industry myself, I saw how strongly people were affected by the downturn in residential housing, and the number of people who lost their homes because the values dropped, and they lost their jobs, and various different reasons. And it is starting to come back. We're starting to see builders come in and get approvals and to start building, but at a very slow rate compared to what we've seen before. Seeing just a small number compared to back in the 2004 to 2006 range. But we are seeing an upturn. This type of a project is thriving in other areas, in the Banning Beaumont area. They're building homes in retirement communities like this, and they're very well-received, and they're great projects. And so, I look forward to something like that happening here, and hopefully, it will not be five years from now. And we're looking at another extension. Hopefully, the market will pick up enough to where we can have that big vacant piece of land there converted into something very nice that will be supported in the community.
Thank you, Commissioner Venetta. I have one question for staff. Could you clarify the extension terms? I know that the original agreement went into effect January 12th, 2006, for 10 years, which means it was January 12th, 2016. That date is since passed. Could you just clarify that if we grant a five-year extension, is it from today? Is it from January 12th? Just a little clarification would be appreciated.
The five-year extension would be from January 12th.
So, the new expiration, if it was a five-year extension, would be January 12th, 2021. Perfect. Thank you. Questions? We have Commissioner Sims waiting to speak.
Just a comment. I support the extension for five years. I think the, it's a good, it's a good project. I think 27 additional residents of an upscale senior type would be a benefit to the city. I think it's a low, low-pressure, low, you know, they're, low expense to the city to have the additional, this type of use for the property. And I think it dovetails well with the medical in the area. It would, I think there's good synergy there. And I think, long-term, it's a, it's a, it's a great benefit to the city.
Any other questions or comments before I ask for a motion? No? Anybody like to make a motion? I'll motion. I motion that the Planning Commission recommends that the City Council accept the Aquabella Development Agreement. Annual report is submitted by Highland Fairview, finding that the property owner has compelled, has complied in good faith with the terms, obligations, and conditions of the Aquabella Development Agreement, and that the Planning Commission recommend that the City Council authorize the mayor to sign the extension term, Attachment 1, agreement for the Aquabella Development Agreement, to approve a five-year extension of the development agreement, extending the term to January 12th, 2021, as provided in Section 2.3.2 of the development agreement adopted by Ordinance Number 704. Perfect. Please cast your votes. Commissioner Baker? Nope, that's the TV screen. Push that button one more time. There you go. Perfect. Last call for votes. Three, two, one. The motion passes seven to zero. Do we have a staff wrap-up on this item?
This item will be going to the City Council. There's no appeal option, since the City Council will be the final deciding body.
Do we have any staff comments?
Just in general?
Down the agenda.
I do want to report out that we have had some good successes lately in terms of the types of projects that are coming through, but also the types of programs. Tonight, Mike Lee, our Economic Development Director, and Alan Brock, our Community Development Director, are off at an Inland Empire Economic Partnership Presentation, where three projects in Renner Valley were nominated for awards. One was the World Logistics Center, one was the Karma New Car Factory, and another one was the Higher Movel Program. So, we're getting some good recognition through some of the regional bodies, and I think that's always a good sign. So, thank you.
I'm still waiting for the Karma Factory to open up. I'm hoping they'll give us Moreno Valley residents a discount on their cars.
You're just hoping they give you a test drive.
Exactly, just a test drive's on ask.
I actually had an opportunity today to actually go over to the shop, which is under construction. They've got a lot of activity going on there. They've done some pretty wonderful things inside the building to kind of get it ready for the type of car that they're actually building. They're doing some test welding on some of the cars. You see the bodies kind of coming to shape, but there's nothing being produced, but they're just trying to train and test and get everything sized in there. It looks pretty good, so.
Yeah, I'm excited for that project. It's a pretty awesome project. Do we have any Planning Commissioner comments? Nope? Okay. With that, I'd like to adjourn the next meeting. I'd like to adjourn tonight's meeting to the next regularly scheduled meeting of the Planning Commission, March 24th, 2016, at 7:00 PM, right here in the City Council chambers. Thank you very much, and have a good night. March 24th, 2016, at 7:00 PM, right here in the City Council chambers. Thank you very much, and have a good night.